Hello and welcome to the Kosh Podcast. This is your host Timber Smith. And let me tell you something, I'm super excited about this episode. This is episode number two. I want to send a shout out and say thank you to all that listened to the first episode. The feedback was excellent. But we are definitely a work in progress and of growth. So look, so I would look forward to keep hearing what you all have to say. The other thing that makes me super excited about this episode is my guest, this week's guest. This week's guest is my, one of my fraternity brothers, Dr. Alfonso Simpson. How you doing over there, Dr. Simpson?
Man, I'm good. I'm, I'm, I'm super good, Timber.
Yeah, you're good?
I'm doing good.
Alright, alright.
I'm excited to be here.
You ready to jump in?
I'm ready to jump in.
Okay, okay. Alright, so can you share a little something about yourself? And what is your connection to the city of Oshkosh?
Alright, well, Timber, as you, as you've already said, I'm Dr. Alfonso Simpson Jr., but you know, I don't wear that title everywhere. And, and, and in a sense I do, cuz I do prefer that people call me Doc. You know, my students calling me that, why, calling me that, you know, back in another life. But yeah, it, it's followed me here. And I, I am, I, I like it here. I love it in Oshkosh. I've been here since July of 2019. Me and my wife and our daughters, we moved up here.
Okay, so you new to the space?
Yeah, I'm new to the space. Oshkosh wasn't on the radar, bro. It wasn't.
Did, did you even know the word?
I, I did by the bibs, you know?
Wait, wait, wait. You ain't telling me you got some of them bagage overalls? Is that what you hollering? Is that what you saying?
The kids had some. We had them for the kids, but that's it. I did not know that, that Oshkosh was a real place.
Oh, okay. You didn't know it was real?
I thought it was an expression, you know? Oshkosh bagash, you know, I really thought it was an expression. Wisconsin was not on the radar. I had never been to Wisconsin before I came to Oshkosh.
Really?
I really. And I never, I never thought that I would ever come to Wisconsin, to be completely honest with you. But you know, I am, I'm from Alabama.
Oh.
Born and raised.
Wait, wait, you, wait, what, what part of the south is, you know, you gonna have to go a little more in depth on that?
Bro, the deep south, low, I'm from, as they say, LA.
LA?
Lower Alabama.
Okay.
Low, I mean, when I tell you low Alabama, I am like fifteen minutes from the Florida line. Yeah, I'm in, I'm from a little place, you know, when you get down so far in the south, you ain't even known by little cities and towns no more. You know them by counties. I'm from, I'm from Covington County, Alabama.
Covington County, they only holler about the city. Or is it a city?
It, it is. Andalusia, Alabama is where I'm from. Covington County, the thing about Covington County, and this is, is really funny, we got a couple of little claims to fame. This one is a little morbid, you know, to be honest with you. But just about every casket that's ever been made, or especially the ones that, that they buy for celebrities, Michael Jackson's, Aretha Franklin's, all of those, come from Andalusia, Alabama, and the Covington Casket Company.
What?
Yeah, they make them right there. And so that's, that's one little thing that you know, and you recognize Covington by.
You know, I don't know if that's a hookup I want.
Right, I, I hear you, bro. I hear you, you know? And but then also we have Robert Ori. You know, Robert Ori is actually from Andalusia, Alabama. He and I went to high school together.
Okay.
Yeah, my dad was a PE coach.
Wait, wait, wait. You gonna, you gonna have to go a little deeper because not everybody is our age. So, so can you share with us, who, who's Robert Ori?
Well, we call him Robert.
I know who, I know who Robert Ori is, but you know?
Retired NBA player, played for, now, help me out here, for LA.
Did he? Yeah. Wait, wait, wait. I'm the wrong man to give you hands on, on sports stuff?
Yeah.
I, I.
He's Lakers.
But, but he done, he got a ring or two.
He got seven of them.
Oh, he got a seven ring?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, he was with the Phoenix Suns at one point.
He got some Tom Brady.
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, when Tom Brady just did this, this last feat, you know, in the Super Bowl, Robert, Robert Keith, or Robert Ori, we call him Robert Keith, Robert Keith, you know, posted something on, on Twitter, I think it was Twitter, Instagram, something that, that, you know, was speaking directly to Tom Brady, said, "Welcome to the club," or whatever. He had his seven rings, he had his little seven, you know? And I thought that was interesting, but yeah, Robert Keith and I, we, we grew up together. My sister actually graduated with him. He was three years older than I. But we, Andalusia being, you know, a fourth the size of Oshkosh, we all went to the same church, we went to the same school. You know, our parents were friends, you know?
So, so for us that think that the Kosh is small.
Oh, no.
This ain't small.
Man, to be honest with you, when I felt, I felt bad after a while. Cuz when we first moved here, and I, and we brought, me and Renee came up, and then we brought the kids, they were like, "Oh, my God, we got a Target." "Oh, my God, we got this, we got that. Oh, my God, there's more than one grocery store." You know, cuz where I was, we, okay, so I came up here to, to Wisconsin from Illinois. I was a professor at Western Illinois University. I was the chair of the African American Studies Department there. Then I became the Chair of the Liberal Arts and Sciences Program, when African American Studies folded into a minor. You know, which housed Women's Studies and Religious Studies as well, but I was there eighteen years.
Whoa, that's a minute?
Yeah, our kids were born there, you know? It's really interesting how it works though, because just, just really, really quickly, from Alabama, I tell people that I'm here in Oshkosh by way of Illinois, by way of Wyoming, by way of Missouri, by way of Alabama. You understand what I'm saying?
I, I thought I was following, but I ain't gonna lie, I got lost.
Okay, so, so, so look, I came to, to Wisconsin from Illinois. I moved to Illinois from Wyoming. That's where I met my wife, Renee. Renee's from Denver, Colorado. She was a student at, at UW, I was gonna say UWO, she was a student at UWYO, University of Wyoming. And as I was, I met her there. But before Wyoming, that's where I got my PhD. I got my masters at Mizzou in Columbia, Missouri, and my bachelor's there in Alabama. You know, so Alabama to, to Missouri, to Wyoming, to Illinois, to Wisconsin.
That, that, that's a trip.
You know what's funny though, when I think about it though? I'm, I tell people all the time, I've been in school since I started school, you know?
You know, most, look, I'm gonna keep it one hundred with you, you know, since I've worked in academia for a minute now. People that have PhDs, they done been there from the jump.
Yeah.
You done went to school, you get that bachelor's, and then you decide, you know, I like this, I'm just gonna hang out here for a minute.
Yeah.
And so I, I, you know, I feel like that's, that's how PhD works.
Yeah, it, it does in a sense. I mean, me, I was a little hard headed because, you know, I was, I was wild. To be honest with you, my undergraduate and my mindset was to just go back home and teach. I was gonna be a band director, you know, at my high, at my high school in Andalusia.
Okay.
And as a fraternity brother of ours, you know, who basically said, "No, you got something. You don't know what you got, but you come into Mizzou," cuz he had gone to the University of Missouri Columbia, you know, and said, and was a part of something called the Campus Visitation Program, which I think would be phenomenal if we had here, you know, but at any rate. It was a group of black fellows, you know, graduate students, who were handpicked by the provost to go back out to the HBCUs to recruit other black students to come to, you know, Mizzou.
Okay.
And so he came back to Alabama State, that's where I was, and he said, "You got something, you just don't know what you got. You come to Missouri." I'm, me being who I am, I was like, "No, I'm not going home, I'm going to be..." He said, you, you know, he said some other words, "You going to Missouri."
Right.
And I was like, "Alright, I'll go try it. I'll go see what you talk about." And I got up there, man, and interviewed and auditioned, next thing you know, they were offering me a fellowship. You know, the Justice Thurgood Marshall, Brother Thurgood Marshall Fellowship, to go to, to go to grad school, you know, me being as country as I was, I was like, "What that mean?"
Bruh.
I had no idea. Bruh, I didn't. I didn't know what that, I was like, "What is a fellowship?" You know?
Yep.
And I'm like, and they were like, "Hey, man, they gonna pay for you to go to school. They want you to be there, and they wanna pay you to be there." I was like, "Oh, okay, I could do that."
Okay.
And so that's when graduate school, that's when school got serious to me.
Right.
And so, you know, the masters led to the PhD, the PhD went right into a job at a university, to another university, and hey, I didn't take any breaks in between. So I still was like, like I said, since I started in kindergarten, all the way to now, I don't know what it's like to not have a spring break. I don't know what it's like to not have Christmas vacation, Thanksgiving break. You take that from me, I'm gonna lose my mind, cuz I've had it for forty-eight years.
Look, you is not made for the private sector there.
Not at all, bro. And so I, I think that's really interesting. And another thing that I, as I sat and had time to think about it, and this is probably too much thinking, but every, everything I've been involved in, every school, starting with college, has had a concurrent run of gold. Even the frat is all had gold in it.
Black and gold?
Black and gold, black and gold, brown and gold, purple and gold. Here we go, black and gold again.
Look, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna throw this out there just so our listeners understand that me and you are part of the illustrious Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And our, our colors are black and old gold.
That's right.
And what I loved about it is that the colors of UW Oshkosh is black and gold. So I mean, there's, there's love in there.
I'm telling you, that gold is everything, man. It was that way at Wyoming, it was brown and gold. At Western, it was purple and gold. Mizzou, it was black and gold. Alabama State was black and gold, you know, so the gold is concurrent, means something.
Well, that, you know what, it sounds like you've got navigation for your life. It sounds like you, you should be places that own them colors.
That's right, golden.
Alright.
Yeah, my, my life is golden, bro. That's how I see it. That's how I feel. You know, really tying it into Oshkosh, you know, I, I love it here, man. And, and my life, I, I feel like, to be honest with you, I am in the, a golden place in my life. You know? Some people, like you kinda just mentioned a while back and said, you know, people think Oshkosh is small. You know, there's this African proverb that says, "It takes a stranger to a village to appreciate the beauty," you know? And so here I am, appreciating it, man. I love it here.
And get that what it deserve, you know what I'm saying? Out there, that's true.
Yeah.
I appreciate it here. That's how I've ended up living here for twenty-five years plus, plus. Alright, you ready to, to move on into the?
Let's roll.
Okay, okay. So the first segment of the Kosh is called, "What in the world is going on with?" Alright, so that's where you get an opportunity to tell us. You finish that, that statement there.
What in the world is going on with the government?
What you mean?
With this whole post-presidential impeachment. Yeah. And I don't follow politics like that.
Wait, wait, wait. You, you, wait, wait, wait. Bruh. I agree.
I don't follow politics like that, but what in the world is going on with that, man? Because it seems like we are, we are focusing so much effort on that, and I mean, you know, I kinda get it. But the key word in that was kinda. I think we all kinda get it. I think they kinda get it. But it's like, you know, someone explained to me, well, they're doing this to try to keep this man from being able to resurface. You know, to re-enter, to not just run for president again, but to be a part of anything. If, if, you know, he's got impeachment, you know, on his, his record, then, you know, there's, you ain't coming back in the house.
I, I don't know.
I don't know either, bro.
Wait, wait, I don't know if that's true.
Well.
You know, but I will agree with you.
Well, it seems like it, it seem like that. I mean, that just makes sense.
Um, I don't know. You know, here's my thing, there, there's a side of me that says it's to possibly keep us from having the same situation occur again.
Yeah.
Right? Possibly.
Yeah.
There's a part of me that also says, is this about the fact that we should enforce ethical? And, and I don't wanna make it political, but, but if there is a situation where people break laws, I'm a fairness guy, right? I'm all about fairness. So what I don't wanna see is, I don't wanna see a situation where someone gets away with something that someone else couldn't get away with too. So all my thing, all my, look, this isn't about whether we enforce or not. It's about to me, whether we are forced the same thing across the board. So when I say that, what I mean is, if this political person gets away with it, that should mean that someone should be able to say that the person before them or after them should be able to get away with it too. And I can't say that would happen, cuz if that political person gets away with it right now, you can't convince me that the political person prior could've got away with the same thing.
Aw, man, here we go, you know?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, cuz I'm, I'm, I'm a creature of fairness. This is not about, this is not about conservatism, or, or liberal, or anything like this. This is about consistency of America. You either treat, treat everybody the same way, or you let everybody get away with it.
Right, well, I mean, I understand that, and it makes sense. I mean, when you put it in, in that context, it makes sense, which goes along with the analogy that I have, and this is how I understand it. It's like, okay, if you get filed, if you foul out of a game, you are not getting back in that game, because you fouled out. You see?
Bruh.
And so, yeah, and so that's how I see it. So it's like, okay, so what they're doing now with this post-impeachment stuff is kinda like saying, okay, look, this man fouled out of the game, the game is over, but we need to make sure that if, if the game, if we play this game again, he's not gonna be able to play, because he fouled out in such a horrible way, you know? I don't know.
I think, no, I think that's an excellent analogy. I mean, you know, the one thing I think is everybody relates to sports.
Yeah.
Right, you know, you know, even if you don't play the game, if you don't play sports, we all have some under, greater understanding of sports. Look, we understand what sports are, we either watch them or play them or something, right? So I think that's a great analogy. Look, people do wrong things in a game.
Yeah, they do.
And then they get suspended.
That's right.
Some people, you know, you get kicked out of one game, two games, a whole year or more.
Hey, you do something bad enough, you getting put out the league.
Period. And I do think that that is maybe the way that this should be looked at in some occurrence.
I agree.
Now, I have, you know, I'm not gonna lie, I'm, I'm a political animal. I watch so much politics, I hate to admit it. Because you know what I wanna be? On my A-game.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, well, you know, I have individuals that wanna have those conversations with me. And, and what I never wanna do is I never wanna be caught flat-footed or off-guard. And I don't wanna become, I don't wanna come across as somebody who's not a loving part of our citizenry.
That's so funny that you say that. My dad was just telling me that this morning. I was talking to him, you know, shout out to my dad, my mom, my folks in Alabama, though they're battling COVID right now, both of them have it.
No, no, don't, 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 don't bless us with that.
Hey, they got it, but man, I'm just telling you, I was talking to him this morning, and I was telling him, you know, about, you know, some of the things that, that I've done and that we're doing, and I was telling him about this that was coming up. And he said exactly what you said, stay on your A-game, you know? I was like, "You're right. I, I try to stay consistent with it, you know, know what's going on around you." I said, "This is Oshkosh," you know?
Yeah.
And I said, "This brother that I'm getting ready to talk to is in the know." And so.
I don't, I don't know about all that.
You in the know. You are, man.
But I will say this, I just like to, I don't wanna come, look, I, I don't like to choose teams like that, right? Because one day, one day, once we, once the podcast gets a little further on, we'll, we'll have more challenging political conversation, right? Cuz there's ways I feel about certain things, and it may not be the way that people assume I feel.
Yeah, yeah, you right about that. I know.
But, that being said, you know, we, we, we ain't there, and politics right now is way too polarized. But, but I do think this topic is super important. I mean, you know, what in the world is going on with that is, is correct. Just watching the things, and if don't, if don't nothing else make you feel some kinda way, them videos, to me, are undeniable.
Yeah, you're right. They are. They really are, you know, and, well, I'm gonna leave that alone. I was getting ready to go somewhere, but we'll be talking about that another ten minutes. I don't wanna do that, but yeah, the videos are undeniable.
Hey, look, this your show, man.
It is what it is, you know? Cuz I could go on with that. I mean, it's not just, it's not just the post, you know, the post-impeachment stuff, not that. But, you know, what in the world is going on with our government as far as, I mean, hmm, I'm gonna leave that alone. Let's move on, bro, cut.
Wait, do I gotta bring you back for another episode? I'll bring you back.
Hey, we can revisit that.
Okay, we can, we can revisit that. Alright, so I'm gonna throw out my what in the world is going on.
Yeah.
Look, what in the world is going on with this student loan forgiveness?
Man.
Look.
You don't know whether to believe that or not, you know? I'm so, I got so much debt and student loans, till it just seems impossible, you know? I hope they do it. The way I feel is like, I hope they just forget about it, you know, but.
First of all, the government never forgets.
You know, I know, I know, but man.
Look, all I'm gonna say is this.
I did something so stupid though, Timber.
Look, I didn't, I didn't have, I was there with you. I had people when I was in school giving me the worst financial advice ever.
Yeah, me too.
You know, and then, and then, and this was, you know, I don't wanna date myself, but this was definitely early nineties. And I had cats telling me things that just were bogus about school loans. But that being said, here's what I'm gonna say, and I had my school loans for a minute, I still got some right now. I done paid them things multiple times.
Multiple times.
Multiple times, but I'm getting, I'm getting beat up by the interest and by situations of deferment. You know, because you know, hey, look, everything ain't always, eh, eh, you know, I've been lucky enough, I've been blessed enough to be, been presented with great opportunities, but they don't always line up back to back, and every opportunity is not always a situation that is fruitful.
Yeah.
So.
I get into this student loan thing, and you run into, what they say, you know, at one point, I felt like I was just being, you know, taunted. You know, I was getting calls from different companies, and they were promising this, and they were promising this. And then it was one saying, "Well, we can get your payments lower to this." And, you know, now, since you're an educator, it can be this, and after you pay consistently for this many years, we'll forgive this much. I mean, I don't even know what to believe anymore. I just threw it all up in the air and just said, "Okay, let's defer it." And I have been deferring and running from that deferment umbrella, you know, cuz, you know, as it starts to get closer to you, you start thinking, "Okay, I'm gonna be paying this thing in three months. I'm paying it two months. After a month, I'm looking for, okay, how is, can I blow this back up in the air?" You know, and I've been doing that for so long. And the thing is, you know, I was okay, I was a scholarship student in my undergraduate. And I was scholarshiped in my, you fellowshipped in my master's program. But bro, the thing that happened with me is that money, you know, I had the, the wrong financial advice as well. I was looking at this like, "This is free money," you know? And I know it wasn't free, but I would go and get it, and I had an issue of trying to keep up with the Joneses.
Bruh.
I did, man. I did. I was like, "Okay, well, I want a new truck," you know? And I'm gonna date myself by saying this, I wanted, you know, during, at that time, I, I was driving this little Ford Escort. And I was crazy, man, because, you know, the Ford Escort was paid for. You know, mama and daddy still was paying the insurance on that thing. I was, you know, in grad school, and I was young, because, you know, I went straight through. And I was like, "I want a hundred passport." And my, my mom and dad was like, "Well, you gonna pay the insurance, you gonna pay that bill if you do it. You crazy to give up this car that's already paid for, and it's, it's running just fine. I want the passport." So I went, took out the loan, got the passport, went and bought some other things, you know? Went and got me a DVD player, you know? I know that sounds so antiquated, but I did.
I mean, you're students. When you're a student, you young, and your judgment, you don't know, you don't know nothing but what you know.
I went and got this big old huge desktop computer, this, this Apple computer and all this kinda stuff, and laser jet printer. I was living the life, man. I was, I was in the lap of luxury. And so I thought, and then all that stuff came back around, and, you know? And when I tell you I did something so crazy, it was, now, we're in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine. Man, I was, I was in that small crowd that was believing, "Oh, all these computers gonna reset in two thousand."
Oh, you didn't, no. Please, wait, 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 wait. No, don't tell me. Wait, 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 you, you might.
You right, man. I thought, I was, I honestly believed that, oh, man, all this stuff, they don't know what they doing. That, these computers gonna reset in two thousand, man. Two thousand came, and it kept coming.
It went.
And everything was still there. And it was like, you know, Mr. Simpson, you have this, this, this debt that you owe.
You didn't think it was gonna disappear?
I thought it was gonna disappear, bro.
No, man.
I don't know, and you would say, "Come on, Dr. Simpson, you was smarter than that."
Wait, wait, wait. I ain't gonna say, and look, this is not a judgment of intelligence. This is just about the fact that the government will never lose that. Somewhere, there's a carbon copy of what you owe.
Bro, let me tell you, it was a whole bunch of us at one point, we went there, out there in Wyoming, man. We was believing that, hey, all this gonna reset. Who, we, nobody ever been into a new millennium, and so this is gonna happen, you know? Whatever, bro. It all just, it kept going. And so at that point, I was like, "Okay, I'm in for this thing." And shoot, it's grown so much.
Yeah.
It has grown so much, you know? I, I don't even wanna get into how much it is, but what's up with the student loans? They there.
Hey, I, look, I'm gonna tell you like this. I made a very conscious decision within the past several years that I, I'd given up all hope on something happening. And I was in that, I was gonna be part of that thing where you work in a public institution, teaching kinda thing, or, or if you volunteered and under, like a maricorpse or kinda thing, and you put in your ten, you put in your ten years of payments and blah, 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 and then they forgive the rest of that loan. Let me tell you, when I realized that, that there, they, 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 they was not really doing that, I decided that I was gonna go a different route, and I was just gonna, going and find it refi and put it under a certain percentage, and I'm getting this thing done, you know? But it, it's crazy, you know, we, we, I'm gonna wrap it up here. Look, it's just crazy how that happens, cuz during the time that I've had my school loans, I know I've paid for it at least once, if not multiple.
Multiple times over.
Uh, multiple times over, just period, just, but, but the interest, the interest, uh, the interest is Hussein Bolt.
Right.
Right, and, 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 and even if you, look, even if you think you paying to keep up, you ain't keeping up with Hussein Bolt.
No, you're not.
And so, look, I ain't robbed, I ain't robbed the government of a damn thing.
Yeah, right.
Cuz I done paid this.
Yeah.
And so I, you know, there comes a point where there, there, to be there should be, there needs to be an understanding and fairness in the practice of it all.
I, I agree, you know, I, I, I agree, and I, you know, with the student loan forgiveness, I do believe that, you know, the loans should be forgiven at some point, especially if, like, for those of us, notice I say us, for those of us who take the loans out and we get degrees in education, and now we are educating people, I mean, I think the loans after so many years should be forgiven.
Bruh.
I do.
Hey.
I do. I feel like they should be forgiven, or at least reduced, I mean, significantly, because it just makes no sense. You know, you, you, you killing the people that's actually try, that's helping you, and it's, I don't know.
No, 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 you right. But, but you know what, that was a hot topic. Look, I'm, we gonna have to come back.
Yeah, we'll have to on that one, man, and I'm probably be at the same place.
I'm hoping that. I'm hoping that. I mean, look, I done made some moves, I'm hoping that.
Man, I need to just get on my A-game and just do it, you know, it's so many other things, though.
Look, 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 we gonna talk off, off, you know, off a podcast, and, and we gonna.
Cause now you got me, now, I'm, now I'm irritated. I haven't thought about that, I haven't thought about that in so long now, I'm thinking about it, and I feel like, I feel empty. I was full at first. I was like, "I'm so happy to be here."
Hey, hey, look, look, we gonna bring it back around, alright? You ready for the next segment?
Yeah, man, cuz that just got on my nerves.
Hey, my bad, man, my bad.
It's alright.
Alright, so the next segment is word or phrase association. So you.
It's a game.
Yeah.
I like this.
Okay.
I think.
So all you gotta do is I'm gonna say a word, and you tell me whatever comes to your mind, and then I need you to elaborate a little bit. Is that cool?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one is food.
I like it.
Oh.
A lot. You know, and I, I like it too much.
What you mean?
I like food all, I mean, I can eat all day. I like stuff that tastes good. And I think most of us do. My, I, my vice is, is confections, sugars, any type of cake, cookie, doughnut.
Oh, you that man?
I'm that man. That's why I stay in the gym though, bro. I'm so serious.
Oh, so you balance it out. So you eat all the sugar, but then you work off all the sugar?
I have a balanced diet. Yeah, I have a balanced diet, because, man, I like sweet drinks, I like sweet. Yeah, I have a balanced diet because, man, I like sweet drinks, I like sweet food, I like fried food, crunchy food, food, period. Chew, swallow, that's what I like, you should, let's go back, food, chew, swallow.
That's a fact, look.
It is a fact.
Alright, you ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Alright, cocktail or beer?
Uh, cocktail.
Okay, what you like?
Well, I really don't drink now.
Okay.
But when I did.
Alright.
Uh, you know, this is a hot topic, alright, and hot, I like that, I like the acronym, um, honest, open and transparent. And so that's what I'm gonna be, um, man, when I was in college, you know, um, it was always what they called a Cape Cod.
I ain't never heard of that.
You ain't never heard no Cape Cod?
You know, no.
You have never heard of a Cape Cod?
First of all, look, I'm from the Kosh.
Yeah.
You know, or, 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 eh, look, I claim the Kosh, cuz I done lived here longer than I lived where I'm, I'm originally born from, but, but I'm from the Kosh and the Kosh, I don't know if we know nothing about no Cape Cod.
Man, vodka and cranberry juice.
Oh, that's what they call a Cape Cod?
Yeah.
Bruh, I used to drink that, um, mm.
Yeah.
That, that, that's tasty.
It is tasty, and that's the, that's the one, it was between that and the screwdriver, the orange juice, gin and juice, gin and orange juice.
Oh, look.
That was, but you have to be able to make that right, but the Cape Cod, I mean, that was always just right.
Gin and juice though, that takes me back to Snoop days.
Yeah, it do. But you know what though, to be honest with you, where I was in my undergraduate career, I just pledged, was in the frat, doing stuff, man. It's crazy because um, in Alabama, see, I, this is gonna date me, this is gonna date me, but I was in college when Cisco was a thing.
Ooh, wait, did you just, did you just bring up the thong song on the slide? Did you, did you just do that on, on the Kosh?
I was talking about the drink, bro.
No, wait, oh, wait, there was a drink, oh.
The drink called Cisco that everybody claimed had crack in it.
Okay, my bad, my, my bad, you know?
So I'm talking about that.
Okay.
But then outside of that, you know, it was the, it was the, the um, brick of Mad Dog.
Oh, yeah, wait.
That brick, he gets you a brick of, of Mad Dog, see, yeah, now, now you pushing, looking at me like I'm a whiner, right, cuz that's wine.
Wait, 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 I ain't gonna, look, I ain't looking at you no kinda way. I might've been looking at you like, mm, you brought up Mad Dog.
Twenty twenty.
Wait, look, that, there was memes out there about that, the fact that Mad Dog had twenty twenty behind it, there's a reason why, because it was all wrong.
Yeah, you better believe it.
Hmm.
Man, can we Mad Dog, me and, me and the bruh's can go rounds and rounds talking about them bricks of Mad Dog, they used to just be throw it back there in the backseat. But it's anyway, that's what, that's what it was. Thank God for deliverance. I don't do that stuff no more, man, it ain't good for my brain cells.
Nah, man, look, Mad Dog is evil.
Yeah.
That's all I got to say about it.
Yeah.
Alright, you ready for the next one?
We might as well be. So, so, so I'll say this, people listen to like, why are you, you know, hey, I'm human, I'm right.
Yeah.
And this is a good, this is a good conversation, I like this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, next word, Amazon.
Amazon.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I thought of something that I was gonna say, but I'm not gonna say it, cuz it's kinda crazy. It go all the way back to a lyric that Rick James said.
Oh, wait. Don't deny, wait, don't deny us the Rick James lyric.
It's a brick house, you know, you remember that song?
Yes.
Brick house, they say, it's built like an Amazon, but anyway, I know that makes no sense.
No, that, that makes too much sense.
You said Amazon, that's the first thing I thought, oh wow, she a brick house, she built like an Amazon, but no, um, you know, when I, when I see the word Amazon, hear the word Amazon, I automatically begin to think like everybody else does, you know, um, the, the online shopping and ordering and things like that, and I try to stay away from it.
Oh, you don't do it?
I do it, but I try not to do it.
Oh, that mean you ain't successful?
No, yeah, well, yeah, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not successful. And then again, you might look at it and say you are, okay, this is what I did. I didn't do it, this is what happened. Now, tell me, ethically, was this right or wrong? I ordered some swimming headphones.
Wait, there's such a thing?
Yeah, yeah, it's an MP three player, but I mean, you can swim with them and I ordered them.
Wait, you swim?
Man, I swim every day, six days a week.
Wait, I got all sorts of questions, but, but I'm, you go on.
Yeah, I swim six days a week, man, I'm done, I'm up to now swimming thirty laps in thirty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I love it, that's, I told you, I have a balanced diet. So um, I got these headphones, well, I ordered them and I have Amazon Prime. And so they were to come the next day. And they told me, they sent me to mail and said, your um, earphones have been delivered. Well, they weren't outside my door. And I'm thinking, mm, somebody must've taken them, what, so I called and they said, well, um, sometimes they make a mistake and they should be there tomorrow, if they're not, call us back. So, I called back, but they, they sent me a picture to say, they were delivered, here's the picture of where they were. And I was like, that clearly is not my front door.
Oh.
They delivered them somewhere else, I, I didn't know where at the time.
Oh.
So, they refunded my money.
Okay, good, eh, look, Amazon is good for that.
Well, here's the thing, I live over here in like the heart of Studentville, you know? And so the headphones had been delivered to Morgan Crossing, you know, to the um, the, to the, the residents over there. And some student saw them and was like, oh, these belong to Dr. Simpson, you know?
Oh, so you got hooked up.
And so they brought them to me. And it's like, Dr. Simpson, Dr. Simpson, this is a package that came for you.
Look, let me go on there, and look, whoever that student was, you, you, you get some love.
Yeah, yeah, and so my, my whole thing is, alright, so if they gave me these, um, but Amazon has refunded my money. So I got them for free, I guess.
Oh, well, you know what?
Is that ethical? Should I call Amazon and say, hey, I wanna get y'all eighty dollars back?
Look, I ain't gonna tell you what you should do with Amazon, but I am gonna tell you that as I continue to give love to Amazon on the Kosh, I need them to go on and give me a call so we can get a little sponsorship.
Hey, they might as well.
That's what I'm saying.
They might be like, our first sponsorship we want is that eighty dollars that. So don't ask them yet.
Look, 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 alright, you, you ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, Netflix.
Man, Netflix, um, I, I like Netflix a lot. And you know, I try not, I tried to get into ser, to watching series and things like that, cuz you know, bingeing, binge watching or whatever, and when COVID hit, actually before COVID hit, I fell into something, it was really a, a real old series, but man, How to Get Away with Murder.
Oh.
Man, that Annalise Keating.
Yes.
Man, I just fell in love with that show, I could not put it down, I would be up sometimes three, four in the morning.
My show was Scandal.
I can't, not that I can't get into, I tried, but I couldn't, I just cannot. But that and then Hit the Floor, that's another, another one I got into. And it's funny because who put me onto all of these series? My kids. Dad, you gotta watch this, right? You know, it was the Amazon, I mean, not Amazon, but Netflix, I mean, I got teenagers, you know? And so teenagers, I, it used to be a time, like when we was growing up, there were things that we would've never thought to look at and watch, you know? But now, these kids, you know, you have to face reality, the stuff that you see on primetime TV, they learning about it in school.
I, you know what?
See, I'm just being honest.
Hey, I, I'm gonna pretend like I used to know, but my, I, I, my, my, my young Timber, Timberette. My little girl, she grown, so I, I, look, I done been away from the high school game for a minute.
Man, well, I got, I got one in college and one in high school, but there are things, like I remember my late middle school days, early high school days, when we used to take the cassette tape, when we was passing a cassette tape around Luke Skywalker and the Two Live Crew.
Ooh.
And you got to put that under the mattress, cuz you didn't want mama finding that.
No, you didn't.
You know what I'm saying?
Facts.
But now, they got songs that play on, on, you know, just regular radio.
Bruh.
Yeah, they got the same lyrics, man, I mean, worse.
Wait, the lyrics then, look, I don't know if they was worse, but it's different because now, the gender who's singing it has changed.
Yeah, right, right.
Right, cuz back in the day, it was Luke Skywalker and Eazy-E, but now.
It's Nicki Minaj.
Carly B.
Carly, Cardi B, um, it's, it's, um, even like, even, and you're just, you're smooth R and B, like Rihanna, Love on the Brain. And all this kinda stuff, I'm like, oh my God, do you hear what she's saying?
No, I ain't gonna lie, I don't listen no more, I done got old.
Well, listen, I, I'm, I'm, I ain't gonna claim old, I, I'm, I'm, I love music. And so when I hear it, I'm like, but a lot of these songs, to be honest with you, I heard for the first time, you know, as I was riding in the car with my daughter, and I was like, what did they just say? What, what was that they just played? You know, she's like, dad, oh my God, everybody's listening to this, this is just on the radio, I said, that's on the radio.
I know.
I said, do you not, do you know what that means? Dad, everybody knows what it means. And what can you do at that point? So, I say all of that to say, when they say, dad, you should watch this show, it's so good, you would love it. And then I see some of the scenes and some of the things that are happening, I'm like, you watched, you watched this? Like, and they say, yeah, I seen it.
I will say this, I, you know, I had a philosophy when my uh, my daughter was growing up, that we did not try to shelter. I did not think that was the way to go. Um, we did not expose either.
Right.
Right. What we did was, if it's there to consume for the public, you know, I'm not talking about no specialty channels or nothing, but if it was out there to consume.
Yeah.
And, and, and TV has changed a lot from when I was young and probably from when you were young, you know, then, then let her watch it. And then we had our conversation, if the conversation is necessary.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And so like, you know, one of the things I would say that my daughter used to watch uh, back in the day, that I, I actually I'm kinda grateful for, was actually the uh, the TV show, the, the shows on MTV that were the um, the, the Teen Moms.
The who?
The Teen Mom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, cuz Teen Mom was on some things where there was conversation I didn't have to have because Teen Mom had that conversation.
Right.
And so that was, that was good stuff.
And more than anything, it probably was so good, what you don't want, you know, yeah, I, I agree with you.
You know what, I'm not gonna pretend to be in the head of my daughter, but I'm gonna say that I don't have any grandchildren yet.
Right, I'm in the same boat with you, I'm praying that I stay there for quite some time.
I got time.
Yep.
Alright, so, one last word association, Valentine's Day.
Ooh, woo, woo, uh, it's tomorrow.
Is it?
Yeah, it's tomorrow.
Look, I'm not, I'm, I'm pretending like I don't know, but I know, look, every good, every, every good.
I gotta go.
Yeah, wait, when you leave here, you gotta go do what?
I'm finding some.
Wait, I'm, I'm not gonna publish this until after Valentine's Day, so we, look, you ain't gotta worry about it.
I already had it made up in my mind, when I knew this was a part of my calendar of, of today, that I was going after this. Because a part of it for me still, for me and Renee still, it's funny because we still like to uh, add the element of surprise, you know? But I don't even mention it, I haven't mentioned Valentine's Day, neither has she, I know that she's gonna, you know, do something, she gonna buy something, she gonna, you know? And so, yeah, so, I got, I got her.
Okay.
But see, the thing is, I'm a father of two daughters, and so I gotta buy, you know, them some stuff too.
You gotta take care of it.
I got three hearts, you know?
Me and my wife, uh, we are anti Hallmark holiday.
Uh huh.
So, I, it's kinda the understanding that, look, I wa, always wanna bless her.
Uh huh.
And I'm gonna bless you when I'm ready.
Yeah.
Ain't gotta be on that day.
Right.
I don't need Hallmark to tell me the day.
That's right, I get it, I understand.
But you know, and look, I ain't knocking Valentine's Day.
Fun, you know it's fun.
Look, I.
I don't, I ain't for Hallmark holidays either, but I mean, I, I like, I like s- stuff.
Look, I like candy.
I like candy, I like a card, well, you know, no, as far as cards are concerned, now the way I feel about that, I ain't finna go spend no five ninety-nine for a piece of paper that you gonna read once and throw in the garbage, you know?
Facts.
And I ain't about to do that, and so, I, you, bro. I'm so, I will go, I will go and I will take pictures of the insides of the cars and the words that I like.
You ain't that man.
I'm that man.
Oh, damn.
And I will, you, you that man too. And I will, I will say, I like the way that was worded, then I will paraphrase some things. But it's the thought that counts, I went and read it, look, I just don't have to pay six ninety-nine because it's all frilly and it feels all furry, cuz it's going in the garbage.
Look, I'm just happy, I'm gonna give a shout out to the, to the wife, to Mrs. Timber, that uh, she is, she is not that young lady. She does not, she does not put that on me, but I do like to surprise her every once in a while.
Yeah, see, you know, my shout out to, to my wife, to, to, you know, Renee, is that she's not looking for anything. She looking for me, she wants the time, she'd rather me be there.
Right.
Instead of, you know, she, it doesn't have to be a card, it don't have to be no candy, it don't have to be no flowers, cuz all of that stuff, really, it fades, it dies, it goes away.
Right.
She wants me to be there.
Right.
And the way, as hectic as my life has been over the past month, you know, or semester, or whatever you wanna say, our lives, man, we just want each other, just to be there. If I could just sit down all day tomorrow, I'm good.
Bruh.
Hey, you better believe it, man.
Alright, okay, you ready for the next segment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Happy Valentine's Day, y'all.
Hey, that's what's up, happy Valentine's Day, y'all.
Right.
Um, the next segment is called, the Naughty or Hero's Corner. Where would you like to take that, uh, you know, who would you like to nominate?
I'm going to go with the Hero's Corner.
Okay.
And I'm going to nominate my wife.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna nominate her, yeah, for the Hero's Corner, I'm gonna tell you why.
Why?
Because she doing the doggone thing, bro. I mean, Oshkosh has, for me, she says it all the time, and, and you know, Brother Sean, he, he always picks, you know, the king of Oshkosh, I don't see it that way. But I, I have found a very lush place here in Oshkosh, you know what I mean?
Hey, you ain't gotta tell me, hey, I done been here since the nineties.
I like it here, and I like the people that I've met here, and I like the things, and I, and when I say she doing the doggone thing, it has not necessarily met her in that way. You know, they know who she is, and I think it's all a personality thing, you know, I don't meet strangers, I don't meet a stranger, I just, I, I act like I've been knowing you for years if we just first meet, you know, so, um, my wife is the um, health teacher at Oshkosh North High School. And, you know, Renee's background is not in health education, um, Renee's background is not in education. But she has enough know-how and knows how to put herself forward so well, you know, she got that job and she is killing it. You know, and so, that's my hero, because anybody who can get in and see, I, I honestly believe that my wife can do any job that is put before her, cuz she has the, the ability to learn it and do it well. She's never, ever got in, got in something and didn't do it well, cuz them kids love her over there.
I'm gonna be honest with you, man, uh, you know, I done had the opportunity to sit on a committee or two.
Yeah.
And um, she do it.
Yeah.
She do, she do it.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, I, kudos.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's who belong in my Hero's Corner.
I love it, love it, love it, love it, alright, so, now, this is where, you know, look, we done chopped it up for a minute, but you know what?
I done got hungry again, okay, so.
But you know what, this is where, look, that was all the prerequisites, we ain't even got to the main topic, but we, we here now, so, so to, to the Kosh's audience, you know, this is where the, the guest always gets to pick what the topic of the week is, so. Um, Dr. Simpson, what, what's your topic of the week?
Man, it's the topic of the month, the topic of the year for me, black history.
Oh, it, it, look.
You know?
Hmm.
Black history, we call it Black History Month, but for me and, and who I am, it's Black History Life. Not even Black History Year, it's always Black History for me. And so, to stay in the confines of the discussion, the topic of the week is Black History Month. It has been amazing.
Okay.
Black History Month fall, um, for, for um, twenty twenty-one, um, it's, it's followed um, Black History Month here in Oshkosh for fall, for, I keep saying fall, but for spring twenty twenty. And um, I'm very proud of how Black History Month has turned out here at U W O or in Oshkosh, and um, you know, the people are supportive, I mean, I know everybody's not necessarily supportive, everybody doesn't really get why, you know, we support, not support, but have a Black History Month.
Hmm.
And all, it ain't for everybody to get.
Bruh.
It's just not, it's just not for everybody to get, but the relevance of it, um, how it is centered, how it centers us as not only black people, but as black men and black women and black children and, you know, black professors and black teachers and black lawyers and doctors. Anything that you can put black in front of, I mean, it's relevant and we are able to be centered in this. It's kinda like, um, Elaine Locke said, and as he spoke about the Harlem Renaissance, you know, you can take the poet and the peasant, you can take the preacher and the teacher, you can take the, the, um, the thief and the robber, you can take the doctor, you know, you could just take all of, but the greatest strength among all of those different people and all, coming from all of those walks of life, is that they. Is that they find each other. And once they find each other, that's when we really begin to make something of ourselves and our culture. You know, we ain't all the same. We, we're not a monolithic group. We can't be, you know, but what's special about black folk, us black folk. Is that we bring so many different things to the table and we know how to add that stuff up and braid it together. To make something that can no, no other culture can duplicate what we do. They, they cannot, you know, um, they, they often imitate it, but never duplicate it. You know, and I love that about us and our culture and I will always, you know, tout blackness. You know, it's like this, this poem by Marie Evans that I really love. It says, who can be, who can be born black and not sing of it? Who can be born black and not exalt, you know? Who? I don't, you just can't. In the coming together of our coming togetherness. You know, it resonates of a sound and a sound over a sound over a sound. And I'm kind of adding to, you know, her poem, but it's just, man. Who, who is the question? Can be born black and not sing of it, not live in it, not be in the joy of it? Who can be born black and not exalt? And that's, that's what I think about black history month. I'm just, my chest is like just out so far. Cuz I'm so proud of, you know, the fact that, again, we doing the thing. We are.
Okay, I'm feeling you on that. So let me just ask. Cuz I, I also feel like I love to celebrate. Black History Month and I, I find it as a time to be. Um, educated myself, cuz I'm not gonna lie. I, 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 as I have gone through my school systems. I have never, at any point in my educational system. Uh, from, from kindergarten through, uh. Elementary, middle school, high school, college, you know, the, the, the degree. The, the, the advanced degree. I have never been in a situation where I was in a majority situation. I have never, I, I have gone to Catholic schools and suburb schools and, and things like that. And, and, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I've been blessed with an amazing education. My parents blessed me with an amazing, with amazing opportunities. Um, others have blessed me with the knowledge on how to maneuver through those. But that being said. What black people did was never a focus in any of those institutions. So as much as I have been educated. And I like to think that I'm an educated gentleman. There's so much I don't know and yet am always surprised by. As if I am that freshman in high school who's taking that course. That freshman in college who's taking that course. There is so much about my, uh, history, a history associated. That I don't know.
Yeah, you know, and it's so funny that you say that because there's so much that I don't know, you know? And there, the history of the United States is black history, you know, and.
Wait, say that again.
The history of the United States is black history or African-American history. It's so many things that, you know, I mean, it's enough history out there that we could start. As freshmen and go through semester by semester, taking twelve hours of African-American history. Per semester, and when we graduate as seniors, we still will not have it all.
What I would like to see is the point in which it is no longer African-American history. It's just American history.
Yeah, well, I got a feeling about, I got, I got a, huh, I feel a certain type of way about that. Because my thing, and this is a whole nother segment. But American, I, I, I too am American, as Langston Hughes said. But at the same time, the status of American, I do own to, to, to nullify the fact. That only white people are American because, now let me clarify, in other countries around the globe. Other, other, on other continents, countries, um, American is synonymous with white. And I want to always have a line of demarcation between what is American. And what is African-American. So I don't, I, I agree by you saying I'd like to see it just all become American history. But I want to be certain that when we talk about American history, you know, that we're not, for lack of a better term. Whitewashing the contributions of black folks.
And, and, and I understand that too. Look, I'm not, I'm not wanting there to be a wash of anything. But I do think there is, uh, and not to make it a, a debate debate. But at least to share some, some different views. My, my, my thought process is, is I think about certain situations where if it, if the race was not pointed out. It would feel different, right? And what I, and so I'll give you my example. Things that happened this past election, right? And people felt some kind of way about different things and, and, and then there was the vote and people didn't, you know. The disenfranchisement of the vote, right? So, and to make it personal, because this is the Kosh, and so we're dealing with Wisconsin. You know, there was recounts only in Madison and Milwaukee. And why was that? We know why that was, right? Because that is where brown people were. Right. Would that feel the same way? Instead of that, just being pointed out, instead of the, the media pointing out that this is where the concentration of. People with tans are, that's how I'm gonna refer. Were, and those were American votes. If everything was an American vote, this would seem atrocious. But the minute we pull it apart and separate. People find ways to find acceptance in it. And that's where I have pause because I don't know about you. But all I know is this country. Born, raised, uh, served, served our country in the military. This is all I know. And so I feel I am very much part of the citizenry. I, I do the things that other citizens do. Work job, pay taxes, do the things. And as things get separated, particularly, I think for people of color. They start to find ways to not make us American. And to give us, to subcategorize as if we were. I, 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 you know, uh, uh, aliens.
Well, you know, it's funny that you said that because no matter what, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's funny that you say that. Because we're gonna always be hyphenated Americans, whether they say we're American or not, you know? Because like I said, I am American. Someone from another country would see me and know that I am American. But I wanted to always be known that my ancestry is of African origin. And that, that speaks of a different type of livelihood here for me. And it, it's not always, you know, negative, it's not always bad, you know? Like I said, there's no disgrace in being black. There's no disgrace in being African. It's, it, there is an inconvenience in it.
There's a, there's a challenge.
There is, there is a challenge. There's an inconvenience, bro. And I'll explain what I mean. When you're in places like, um, like Oshkosh, for example. Or, you know, where I came from in Illinois, or, you know, many little small towns, you know, as a black man, you, I. Man, I'm ballheaded for a reason, because I got tired of having to seek out brothers who can cut my hair in their kitchen. Uh, in the basement, cuz there were no places, there were no barber shops for black men. There were no places for black people to get their hair done.
You ain't gotta tell me, man, my barber became the wife. My wife is my barber.
Do you understand what I'm saying? And so that's the kind of stuff, what I'm saying. And when, you know, you have these places to say, we serve all. We, we, we do all types of hair. All means all, but they don't mean all. And so I would rather go to a place where I know they serve African-American. And when I say that, not, not serve as in a restaurant style, but we, we can cut black hair here and we can do black hair here. You know, that's where we are not looked at as something separate. And that's what you're saying, but that would take, man, four hundred years of a rewind. You know, it ain't gonna just.
Look, you can never, you can never, I never look for the rewind. Because history, the point of history is it done happen.
Well, see, history is that. It's just that. It's his story, you know?
I ain't gonna knock that because, uh, the people that write it are the people in power.
Absolutely. And so, once it's written, that's something that we've always, as a human race, we've always laid, um, relied on. Is the written word. And once it's written, then, you know, it's not even a question as to who wrote it anymore. It's the fact that it's written.
Well, once it's out there long enough, that who wrote it anymore, it don't even matter because it, cuz it, it is what it is. It's written.
It is exactly what it is, you know? And so that's why I think, that's why I said, I started this segment off by saying, you know. It's not black history month, it's black history life for me. Because, and it doesn't mean that I, I don't see anybody else, but I also recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of, of us. And the things that we do, because if we don't tout ourselves, who will?
I understand that.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of how I do it. And so, uh, how I see it. Um, am I always walking around, am I Mr. Black History all the time? No, 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 no. But I mean, I always keep it on the forefront of my mind. I do know, when I look in the mirror, I know who I am.
Identity is so important. I can't stress that enough. Identity is so important.
Yeah, because I can walk into a room full of white people and be just as comfortable as I am walking into a room full of black folks. Color doesn't matter to me. I'm not thrown off by the fact that, cuz I mean, Wisconsin is white, but I love Wisconsin.
Wait, and, but that's kind of my argument. My, my argument, eh, not an argument, argument is the wrong word to use. My point is, is that, um, I am an American citizen. So I walk in any room with any other American citizens and I'm confident. Because I am American. I am citizenry. I pay taxes. I work the jobs. I do the things that is the American dream. This tan does not define that.
For you.
For me.
Or me. For many other people who don't have that tan, you're defined by that tan.
Wait, I think, I think the tan does define. And, and, and I'm not saying the tan does not. It, it has influence. You know, because being a person of color, it influences the way that you carry yourself and the decisions you make. And there's things you have to take into account.
Every day.
Every day.
Because you walk into a room.
Right, I'm not ignorant of the tan. I'm not ignoring the tan. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to impose my American citizenry in places. To make them understand that it is just a tan.
That's good. I get it. I like it, you know? I, 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 I accept that. And I think it's important that, like you said, to note that you said you impose that so that they know. Now, do they always receive? You know, that's the case, that's the point. And it's okay, because we're comfortable enough to know that if you, if you don't, you missing out. You know, if you don't receive me, you're missing out. But there, there, um, it's just. It's the, the fact of the matter is, when we really get into splitting hairs and genes as to, you know. The gradient of this tan and, you know, who is the tanist and, you know. You know, those are the types of things that, that's where it, it, you know, that's where the rubber meets the road. But outside of that, you know, with black history and being black in America, I mean, it has its place. And I believe in just making sure that we center blackness in everything we as black people do. Am I saying that we forget that we're American and we don't welcome white people into the story? No, that's not what I'm saying at all. You know, because our white brothers and sisters have just as much to bring to the table, you know, as we do. I just think it's interesting. I think it's, I think it's really cool that we're able to do that. I just feel like we don't wanna lose our identity in trying to appease, um, people who don't look like us.
I would agree with that. And, and I would even challenge that to say that. That identity will never be allowed to be forgotten. So it's, it's the understanding that through the lens, we will always be viewed. In such a way that. The tan will always be brought into the greater. Judgment of the individual.
Agree, yeah, yeah. And, and let me say this about black history month. Let me say this about black history month as I'm thinking about it. Black History Month is a celebration. We always say this is a black history month celebration. It's not always about pointing out the things that others did to us that was so horrible and so wrong. And a lot of people run from black history month or don't like it because they think, well, you getting ready to slap my hand again. You getting ready to tell me how bad. You know, white people were to black people. You getting ready to tell me how bad, you know, the country was and, you know, you still think that way. And that's not what black history is. It is about celebrating the accomplishments of all people. And how we have really become, you know, just those people who have contributed so much to this society as well. So we're talking about the inventors and the doctors and the teachers and, you know, all of those politicians who've done some amazing things for this country. So that's what black history really is about, you know, our, our black history month is about celebrating the accomplishments and the things that we too bring to the table.
I agree with that. And, and so my part about that is that, um, and then, then, then we gonna let it go. I'm sad that I don't know more. Because identity in the American experience is so important. And the fact that I don't know more about fellow people of color. Um, and the accomplishments and how they helped build this country and the things that they contributed to this country. And that is not, it's not woven into the fabric of our, of our, our history books and what our children are taught. It drives me absolutely insane because that is what gives you your pride. That is what gives you your identity, you know? And I can tell you now that there's only so much you can learn about Martin Luther King. And that is the only.
That's it.
Martin Luther King, and you might, and, 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 and for those educators who thought they were for a little bit ahead. Uh, 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 or a little bit ahead of the game and about it, then you might have learned about Malcolm X. But, but, but I needed, or, or, or Rosa Parks. I needed to learn about those other individuals, those, those individuals that did other things. The inventors. I needed to know about the inventors and what they created because then that tells me, guess what? I create that too.
Yeah, let me say, let me say this real quick. Let me say this. So, the, as you talk about those inventors and those inventions and things. Black History Month is a time that, um, really. How can I say this?
Look, you, you just gotta, I don't have to say it.
When we look at the inventors, Black History Month is a time that reminds a lot of people. That the education that they got was lackluster. And so, black history month is not about learning, it's about unlearning. It's about unlearning. And so, it's kind of like, I'm going to this, I'm going to this black history month celebration, this black history, history month event to unlearn. And unlearning is so much harder than learning and that's why it frustrates a lot of people because they are pushed into a, pushed, pulled out of their comfort zone. And pushed into some real unfamiliar territory where they've got to unlearn years of learning. Like, I share with my students right from the jump, on the very first day, when I talk about it, I ask the question about this story. Uh, I give them this little story about this little boy named Theo who asked his mama, what would the world be like if there were no black people? And she goes through telling him about it. And she goes through telling him about it, and as she's, as they're going throughout their day, there's so many things that aren't there. You know, like the, the brush, the comb, the ironing board, the iron, the washing machine, um, the lawnmower, the refrigerator, the heating furnace. Um, anything just about that we use in this society today. The filament for the light bulb, anything that we use in this society today, we take a lot of this stuff for granted. You know, anything that makes our lives easier, black folk invented. Why? Because they were slave people, or people who worked on plantations, who invented these things to help them in their work. But why are they not given credit? Because their slave masters took those things and the patent was given to the owner of the slave, the owner. So if I were your slave and I invented this mouse right here, you know, you could go and go with me and we can present this thing and the patent is gonna be written and assigned to you. And you, and you'll go down in history as you're the man who invented that. But I did it. And I don't have a voice to say that I did it. That's what we're learning.
Well, yes, but we gonna give the credit of the mouse to, uh, Bill Gates, I believe. I think my man, Bill Gates made that happen.
His name was on it, but he didn't, he wasn't that either. Cause I mean, we can go, we go back to gaming systems and things like that. You know, it was a black man who invented the first game cartridge. And all that kinda stuff. We're at the, we're at the root of so many things that we have, black folk. And we have to, what happens is, we as people, as we begin to learn this stuff, we start having to unlearn stuff. Could you imagine having to go back and learn that two plus two isn't four, it's really three? And how can you navigate through the rest of your life with this new learning that two plus two is three and not four, when you've been taught wrong the whole time? That's what that's like. And people don't wanna get pushed to that level when it comes to learning black history.
No, that, that, the look, we ain't ready.
We ain't ready.
We ain't ready.
That's why we do it, just, just once a month, once a year, you know? Cause if we was to do it six months out of here, man. Good stuff, man. I appreciate you.
Hey, hey, you know, hey, I would like to thank you for taking some time and giving, giving us this blessing on the Kosch. Alright, chop it up on the Kosch. Alright, alright. So, once again, we, we, we about to wrap this up. You know, we, we went hard, me and Dr. Simpson went real hard here. Alright, and so, um, first of all, I'd like to say out there, uh, you know, if you have any questions or if you would like to be a guest on the Kosch, please feel free to email askthakosh@gmail.com. Once again, that is askthakosh@gmail.com. We are always looking for, uh, individuals to spotlight here on the Kosch. And, um, come in here and let's have a conversation and share what you gotta share. Alright, did you enjoy this, did you enjoy this there, Dr. Simpson?
Yeah, I, I mean, I love to talk, so of course I enjoyed it. Um, it's always, it's always a good time sitting with you, brother. It is. Cause you gonna keep it real. We gonna, gonna talk.
The, the, the only thing that I ask is, as a guest on the Kosch, is come in here and be authentic. Yeah, right, right. You know, you know, we, we, like, authenticity is not conflictual.
That's right. Authenticity is the spice of life.
Facts. Alright, so, this is the part of the show where you get an opportunity to s- give any shout outs that you might have. Do you got any shout outs?
I don't know. Explain to me what you mean by a shout out.
Look, shout out can be anybody, like, uh, our last guest, uh, chose to recognize some, some people in the, in the community who are doing some very special things. There, you could shout out the family, you could shout out the friends, you can shout out, you, look, it's a shout out. Or if you are doing something right now, that you need, that this audience, the Kosch, right? Cause we got an audience, right? Alright, if you need the audience to know what's going on out there in Dr. Simpson's world and what you might have coming up on the horizon. This, this here, I'm giving you, look, people pay big money for this kinda spot.
It's the platform.
This is the platform.
Alright, well, I guess I call it a promotion. But it can be a shout out. So I, I, I couched it in this. I'd like to shout out, um, my students at UWO who are daring, and I say loosely, daring to participate in something that we've never really had here. And I say never really had because it's not been done the way that I'm doing it. But I have a gospel choir at UWO. The University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh, has a gospel choir. They are called the Divine Voices of the Valley Gospel Choir. And these kids get together, we've only rehearsed, um, well, we, we got together, we started the organization in the fall of twenty nineteen. And, um, we, well, actually, no, it was the spring of twenty, no, fall of twenty nineteen. And in the spring of twenty nineteen, in February, Black History Month, um, we gave a concert. And out of that concert, we won New Student Organization of the Year. Um, and we were exposed, you know, we exposed ourselves to the community in that regard. But we were a very small organization, probably seven, eight students is all I could seem to, you know, gather at one time, because it was new. People was like, wait, what is this? I don't know if I'm coming to it. Well, now I've got, uh, almost twenty. You know, and we've only rehearsed two times. And it's like the numbers are just multiplying, cause I started with ten, next, the next week I had twenty. I don't know how many I'm gonna have next week. But the reason I'm shouting this out is because this is just the foundation for something, is a larger picture that I have here. I am here and I am going to create a, um, a, a, a valley-wide, region-wide mass choir. I am going to put Wisconsin on the map for gospel choir, right? That's what I wanna do. I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it. This is how I'm gonna do it. This is going to be a, a choir that's gonna be made up of everybody. I should just call the choir everybody, because it's gonna be, it's not, there's no requirement that you gotta be so deep and super religious. There's no requirement that you gotta be a part of any particular denomination. All you gotta do is wanna learn, learn how to sing and be teachable.
That's it.
That's it. Learn how to sing, wanna sing, be teachable, follow the instruction and know that we're singing gospel music. I'm not gonna tell you what gospel is, you know? And you will learn it in that regard, but this choir, the way we're going to sound and the way we're gonna put ourselves forward is not going to match the way we look, I know. You know, but it's gonna be like, people will see us and be like, that's them?
So I got, I got one question. Can y'all sing?
Man, can we sing? We are doing, we, we having a concert, as a matter of fact, on February twenty seventh at River Valley Church. It is in person, um, at six thirty. Come on out, it's gonna be good, man. I'm, you know, working with the musicians.
Can you repeat that again? Where, where is that?
February twenty seventh, Ri- River Valley Church.
Where is that at?
On the corner of High and Congress, right here in Oshkosh. And, um, at six thirty, admission is free. Doors will open at six o'clock. Um, come in and just see what these kids are gonna do. Because what they're going to present to you is going to be just that three weeks worth of rehearsal. That's it.
But they gonna bring it.
They gonna bring it. And, and, and what I want people to understand, and I will probably say this in the concert, is that what you see here and what you hear here is only a result of three weeks of rehearsal. And when I say three weeks, that is meeting once a week for an hour and a half. So, if we take an hour and a half and multiply that by three, that's three, four, what, I can't do the math.
You talking about four and a half hours?
Four and a half hours.
Four and a half hours.
We, four and a half hours. What we're gonna present on the twenty seventh is gonna be four and a half hours.
Okay, but, but nonetheless, it sounds like it will be blessed.
Oh, it's gonna be blessed, it's gonna be amazing, and people are gonna wanna join. Now, the only caveat with the Divine Voices of the Valley Gospel Choir is that they are a student, a recognized student organization, and it is only open to UWO students. You know, or people who are affiliated with the institution, so faculty staff can join as well. Um, but the, the, this larger choir that I'm going to have, that's going to actually span um, from Fond du Lac, Oshkosh, to Appleton to Green Bay.
Oh, there, there, so there's a bigger dream.
There's a bigger dream. This is what I'm saying. That's what I mean by saying that this is going to be that choir that we're going to be on the map for the state of Wisconsin. Because we're gonna be like Wisconsin Mass. I mean, they've got Alabama Mass Choir, they've got Georgia Mass Choir, Florida Mass Choir, New Orleans, New, um, Louisiana Mass Choir. A lot of states have mass choirs, right? Wisconsin is going to have a mass choir and it's gonna come out of the Fox Valley region.
Okay, so, so here's what, here's what I'm gonna say out there. I know, I know that the Kosch audience is out there, they listening, they probably thinking, you know what? I'm nice. I, you know what, I, 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 I know how to get up on the, on, on, uh, the, 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 with the choir. I know how to stand up. But you know, and they gonna wanna, they gonna wonder, uh, how do I reach out to Dr. Simpson? So I can share my gift with the world.
Glad you asked that question. Glad you asked that question.
Well, I got to.
Well, you know what? You can always email me at Alfonso Simpson, that's A.L.P.H.O.N.S.O. Simpson, like Bart Simpson. Alfonso Simpson at gmail dot com. You can email me there. You can get me at Simpson A. At U W O S dot E D U. Um, you gonna see me around town. You gonna see me. Um, and hey, not, don't, don't just get in contact with me, but contact others that you think may be interested in joining me in this mission, and we're gonna build it together.
I'm gonna throw one more out there, just because I do have personal contact with Dr. Simpson here. You can also email the Kosch at gmail dot com, and I will pass on any interest, any interested choir members onto Dr. Simpson.
From the ages of sixteen on up.
There we go.
For that choir, you have to be sixteen. The reason being is because we're gonna, we're going to eventually travel. Um, it may require some driving and these types of things. And so, the only way a minor, um, under, and I say, somebody under the age of sixteen can be involved is if their parent is involved as well. But they'll need to be able to sit by themselves, sing by themselves, and, you know, be like, you know, self-sufficient.
Fair. Okay, alright, so, it's that time, we, we wrapping it up. So we got, we, we got it done, and so there is one last thing that we need to do. Alright, you ready for that, Dr. Simpson? Okay, the last thing is that I need some parting words of wisdom, or some wisdom you would like to bestow on the Kosch's audience. Uh, you know, the, you know, we all got something to share. Uh, and, 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 you know, what, what, what you got? What you got for, for today?
Okay, my parting words and the wisdom that I would drop here on the table of the Kosch is this. Um, don't just be woke, be conscious. And what I mean by that is, there is a difference between a person who is conscious than someone who is woke. When you're woke, your eyes are open, yes, but you're not necessarily conscious of everything that's going on around you. See, um, it's not the job of the oppressor, whoever the oppressor may be in your life, it's not the job of the oppressor to free the oppressed, but it is the job of the conscious to make the unconscious conscious of their unconscious behavior. So be conscious, not just woke.
Man, tell me that's, tell me this episode was hot. This episode was hot, right?
I, I think it was hot. It was hot in so many ways. It was, it was honest, it was open, and it was transparent, bro.
Alright, so, once again, I'm giving it out there. Thank you all for tuning in to this episode of the Kosch. I look forward to hearing from you all. Once again, you can email at askthakosh@gmail.com. And, um, please, I look forward to hearing from you. This is the Kosch.